Good afternoon. We have a quorum present. The April 7, 2015 Board of Education meeting is now called to order. We have a very special guest with us today. Emma Minnickbock, kindergarten student at Lincolnshire Elementary School. And Emma's going to come forward to the microphone now and help us with the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
(Music) I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Stay up at the microphone for a few minutes. I think you have some guests that you have with you today. Would you introduce them to us, please? Stay up at the microphone. Can you point to them maybe as you introduce them? Would that work?
This is my dad.
Hi, Dad.
That's my mom.
And right behind you, Mimi.
That's Mr. Rector. That's Mr. Ford.
And the individuals you just introduced on the back row, who are they? Do they help you at Lincolnshire, maybe?
Our teachers.
Could you all stand so we can see you and recognize you? Thank you for your support today.[493.12][493.12](Applause) Thank you. Emma, could you tell us something about your day at school? What you really enjoy doing?
I really enjoy doing is math and reading.
Okay. Is there anything you would change about your school if you could?
Mostly not.
That's a good answer. What do you do when you're not in school?
Besides watch TV.
What's that?
I watch TV.
Okay, great. Do you like sports? Good. Okay. Anything you'd like to share with us today? Okay. Thank you so much for coming. Colleagues, any questions for Emma? Thank you, Emma, so much. Appreciate it. I would just add briefly that this part of our meeting, the beginning with a pledge being led by the student, is really why we serve on the Board of Ed. And it helps us remember the beginning of each meeting, why we're here. So, Emma, thank you again. Looking for approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the agenda as presented by the Agenda Planning Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. A second?
Second.
Mr. Reidenhour, any discussion, question? All those in favor of the agenda as presented? Thank you. Seven zero. On to the minutes.
Madam President, I move for approval of the minutes of the closed session held on Tuesday, March 17, 2015. Of the business meeting, held that same day, Tuesday, March 17. And another set of minutes for the business meeting, held on Tuesday, March 24, 2015.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. All those in favor? Thank you. Seven zero. We have no one signed up for public comment today, but I will certainly invite anyone here if they would like to come forward and share with us. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Wilcox?
Thank you very much. I was just going to say to you, Emma, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you want. You can go ahead and walk out. This would be a great time if you want to take your parents and grandma, marry your Mimi. All right. And then I'm going to take this as an opportunity to introduce Mr. South. Chris is our chief financial officer, and he's going to introduce some folks who have completed a study for the district. Chris?
Good afternoon, Madam President. Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. This afternoon, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Sarah Bunch, the Assistant Director of Beacon. Beacon is an acronym for Business Economic and Community Outreach Network at Salisbury University. Dr. Bunch is here this afternoon to present the results of a study of the economic impact that the Washington County Public Schools has on our county and the surrounding areas. She will also touch on the results of a second study that details the economic impact of the five school districts of Western Maryland, the economic impact that they have on the four-state area. Dr. Bunch has been developing this study over the last two to three months as part of a cooperative effort between the school systems of the five counties in Western Maryland, those being Garrett, Allegheny, Washington, Frederick, and Carroll. The Beacon Group has completed similar studies for LEAs on the eastern shore and in southern Maryland. And at this time, and without further ado, I will turn the presentation over to our guest from Beacon, Dr. Bunch.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me today. I'm happy to come to discuss the results of the study. This is one in a number of studies. First, with the five counties on the eastern shore, which just, excuse me, the western part of Maryland, was just completed recently. Previously, that for the nine counties of the eastern shore and others throughout the state. I'd like to walk you through kind of our process, the results that we found, and then open it to any questions that you may have for me. In doing this study, we looked at four classifications of value. The first being the traditional economic and employment impact of the school system. The second being the economic value of degrees awarded. The third being the economic development impacts of the school system. And the fourth being the reduction in public costs. When we're talking about the traditional economic and employment impact of the school system, we're looking at the economic impact that the spending of the school system has, including what goes to employees in terms of their paycheck that they then go out and spend on gas and milk and goods and services. Also, to vendors and subcontractors and so forth that kind of trickle down through the economy through each level of spending. When we're looking at the value of degrees awarded, we're looking at the additional lifetime earnings primarily of graduates of both the school system and those who go on to then graduate college as well. Their additional lifetime earnings come with a number of benefits, including additional county tax paid on those lifetime earnings. We're also looking at the economic, or the, excuse me, the impact on local wealth or economic development impacts. With a quality education system comes a number of benefits. We all have heard the story of a family looking to locate. One of the first questions they're asking is, how is the school system? Do we have a good quality school system for our kids or our future kids? And that really has a positive effect on the property values and therefore the taxable base of the county with a quality school system and the ability to attract and retain wealth creators within the county. And the fourth value, the reduction in public costs, there's a whole body of research about the decreased public costs associated with high school graduates and even college graduates. And we'll go into details, but the primary ones that we looked at are those associated with crime, health, and welfare being the primary areas. In order to conduct the study, we had to get accurate input data. And I'd like to thank the school system for getting us timely information on the expenditures of the school system, the employees. What does it look like? Where do our employees live? Do they live inside the county? Do they live outside the county, et cetera? And we're looking at all different funding sources. The process that we followed for estimating these impacts, for value one, we used a software called InPlan developed by the Minnesota InPlan Group. This is kind of the gold standard of economic impact studies. And that looks at that traditional economic and employment impact. For values two through four, we looked at a body of research that others have done linking graduation rates to a variety of indicators, both economic development-wise, public costs, and property values, things like that, the quality of life indicators to develop the series of algorithms to determine the impact in those areas. And one point that's important to keep in mind, and our models take this into account, is the idea of leakage, that not all money that the school system spends stays within the county. We may have vendors outside of the county. We may have a number of employees that live outside the county that are spending their paychecks elsewhere. Our vendors may have a number of subcontractors outside of the county or even outside of the state. So some of the money is going outside of our county. Some is being retained elsewhere in the state of Maryland, and some is going outside of Maryland. And always an important part of the conversation that we ask ourselves in these studies is, how do we reduce the amount of leakage? How do we keep more of that money locally that we're spending? And to get into the results, the first one, in terms of the economic impact, for every dollar spent in operational monies, results in a $1.25 local spending. So we see additional 25 cents in spending locally for each dollar spent on operational monies. And it's important to point out that we separated operational and capital spending in two different models because the nature of the spending is so different. Capital spending can be very significant in some years and nonexistent in other years so that we look at that separately. Annually, the total economic impact of the school system is approximately $354 million with over 4,000 jobs supported in the local economy. And that includes not just jobs at our school system, but additional full-time and part-time jobs that are supported in the local economy because of the spending that occurs, because of our employees going out and spending their money on goods and services, or our contractors going out and spending money to their employees who are spending. Those help to support additional jobs in related industries. When we look at capital spending, for every dollar spent in capital spending, we're looking at local spending of about $1.44. When we look at the state model versus just the county model, that captures some of the additional spending that goes to nearby counties within the state of Maryland. We're looking at $1.80 for every dollar spent in capital monies. And for every $1 million, we're looking at about 17 jobs supported in the local economy for every $1 million in capital spending. And we looked at a 10-year average, given the fluctuations year over year, we looked at a 10-year average of capital spending. And for each year, we're looking at about $3.72 million in economic impact from that spending. At the county level, at the state level, we're looking at about $14.35 million. When we look at the value of degrees awarded, we look first at high school graduates compared to non-graduates, and then college graduates compared to high school graduates. So each graduating class over the course of their lifetime is looking at about $242 million in additional lifetime earnings in present value, which also leads us to about $5 million in county income tax paid on that additional earnings. When we then look at those who go on to graduate college compared to those who graduate high school, we're looking at an additional lifetime earnings of approximately $331 million for each graduating class with about $6 million in county income tax to be paid on those additional earnings. In terms of property value, again, this is the premium on property value that a quality education system helps to create by retaining and attracting wealth creators within the county. We're looking at about $30.12 million in real property tax value, or real property values, excuse me, added by each graduating class, which results in about $285,000 in property taxes, real property taxes. And the last value that we're looking at is the reduction in public costs. Each graduating class, we looked at the trends over the last five years, so this is an average of the last five years graduating classes. But for each graduating class, we're looking at an average of $60 million in reduced public health care costs as they go on to get jobs. In the private sector, they're looking at more opportunities for private health insurance, lowering the public health care costs. We're looking at a savings of $40 million in future crime-related costs. There's a full body of research looking at reduction in crime and a number of different indicators for graduates compared to non-graduates. And $4 million in savings in future welfare costs, again, by being able to go out and obtain employment, gain full employment, and relying less on the public systems. So that's about a total of $104 million in public cost savings. And this is a lot of data and numbers presented here today. And to just kind of show you guys this in a more visual format, we've created a dashboard to help digest all of this information. And I'm going to click through a little bit of that and show you. So everything that I've presented today is also included in this dashboard. And it shows you a variety of different indicators. It shows you per student and per graduating class for most of these indicators. And it allows you to look at the aggregate value of the school as well as the individual values that we've just talked about here. And this just provides a more digestible way to have this conversation and to look at this data versus the charts and tables that you'll see in the actual report itself. So we can see here, we can look at per graduating class, what we're looking at for the value of degrees awarded. Or we can look at the individual per graduate, what we're looking at in terms of degrees awarded. Again, the same for public costs. Per graduate, we're looking at about $40,000 in public health care cost savings, $26,000 in public crime-related cost savings, or we can view this information per class. We also allow you to drill down into the overall economic and employment figures that we presented. These show a breakdown of direct, indirect, and induced, which is the level of spending that occurs, the direct coming straight to employees and vendors, the next level going to the vendor subcontractors and employees and so forth, how that money kind of trickles down through the economy. And the important thing here as well, we looked at what happens to if funding changes occur. What does that mean to the economic impact of our school system? With this technology that we have for the dashboard, we're able to build that in. Instead of you coming to us and saying, let's look at if funding changed by this amount, traditionally, we would have gone back, reran numbers, come back to you in a few weeks later. And now we've been able to build all of this into the dashboard so that you can look at the percentage increase or decrease in funding and the overall effect that that has on the economic impact of the school system. And the last tab just walks you through a little bit about the study and about the dashboard itself. But this really helps to digest all of that information presented. And I would be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bunch. Any other comments, Mr. South, and I'll open it up. Okay. Colleagues? Questions? Thoughts?
Thank you, Dr. Bunch, for the presentation, and Mr. South for working with her group in order to bring this forward to us. Maybe you can explain for people who don't work in economics, what exactly $1 of spending creating a $1.44 worth of spending means? I mean, to somebody who works in a very static mindset, I mean, a dollar's a dollar. So explain how that, in concept, filters through the economy and why it creates more spending then.
So we also call it the trickle-down effect or the multiplier effect. So when I go out and I spend a dollar on milk, that dollar doesn't just stay with the store owner. Part of it does. Part of it goes to the delivery man delivering the milk. Part of it goes to the farmer. And that money continues to trickle down. So that dollar I'm paying goes to that farmer to employ people on the farm to not produce the milk, but I guess collect the milk and so forth. So that's really that multiplier effect, is that that dollar is going through the economy, and it's supporting additional jobs. It's supporting the jobs at the grocery store where I go to buy my milk. It's supporting jobs again on the farm. So that dollar doesn't just get spent and then stop there. It continues moving through the economy. So that's what we mean when we say $1 spent by the school system trickles through the economy to create an additional, a total of $1.25 spending in the local economy. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And then for the, with the capital dollars and the creation of jobs, I think you said 16.6 jobs or something for every million dollars of capital spent.
Correct.
You often hear politicians talk about how many jobs capital creates, and it clearly does create some. There's always a question, though, whether those are permanent jobs or whether those are temporary, just connected to the spending. What perspective can you give us on that?
Right. And we always are careful to distinguish between created and supported jobs. So that $1 million, or per $1 million, we would say about 17 jobs are supported. So it's not that they're brand-new jobs necessarily created, but that spending supports their employment. We do say part-time and full-time because not all of the jobs supported are going to be long-term, full-time jobs. Some of them may be temporary jobs. Some of them may be, you know, employment for that period of time for that person to then go on to the next job. But yes, not all of the jobs supported are going to be supported permanently through that spending that year.
And then I'm particularly interested in the information on educational achievement and attainment and the economic impact of that. Does your model, I mean, one of the challenges we have in this county is for the people who are getting college degrees outside of a few fields that are sort of in every community. Every community needs teachers. Every community needs nurses. For some of the other degrees, we have a challenge finding employers who can employ people with other types of degrees. I'll just say that. Does your model take that into account? Does it have some sort of dynamic approach to arriving at that $5 million or six?
In terms of the value one, it looks more specifically at the inner workings of the county, the industry patterns and things like that. For values two through four, we use the established body of research that looks at per student. So in the report, it does assume that's per graduating class, assuming that all students stay here, which we know is not the reality. But as some students leave, other students from other districts are going to be coming into the county as well. But we were not able to say for sure that each year we are only retaining over their lifetime 70% of students. Because also, some of those who leave temporarily may come back in future years. So for those values, we looked at the graduating class as a whole.
And for me, it does highlight how important it is that we develop the types of, continue to develop, the types of industries that are going to support employment across the training level, whether you're, you know, from a high school diploma to an associate's degree, to a bachelor's degree, to a master's degree and beyond.
Absolutely.
Because it's not just quality of life. We want more revenue in our government in order to be able to either reduce taxes or whatever the politicians might decide to do with it. And one way to do that is to grow it. And if you can't keep the people who are going to have the income, then it makes it harder to grow it, so.
And that's absolutely, we hope that, you know, these studies always generate a number of conversations. In some county, it's affordable housing. How do we get more affordable housing for our teachers to live within the county? Or how do we attract and retain more of our students who may go on to college and then either not come back or come back for a short period and then leave again? So this really highlights, one, the value of the school system beyond just looking at it as a budget line item. But it also opens the door for some of those conversations of how do we decrease that leakage and keep even more of that money within the county?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Bunch.
Absolutely.
Other questions?
No, but I have a comment for Dr. Bunch.
May I?
Please.
Jump in. I don't know how long Salisbury University, Beacon, has been doing this sort of work. And I'm trying to think in my mind if you can do some sort of comparison or trend on the return on investment. The operating budget, $1, multiplies to $1.36. The capital, $1, multiplies to $1.45. Is that going up? Is that sort of static? Is it dropping? How do you see that return trending over the years?
Well, we've done this type of study for a number of industries, much longer than I've been at Beacon, for probably 20, I think, 24 or 5 years that Beacon's been around now. But in terms of the public education system, the first series of studies that we've done, at least in my time there, has been within the last, I believe, three or four years. And that was on the eastern shore. So I don't have timeline data for the public education sector specifically. But I can give you a comparison for the eastern shore. It's not as relevant here. But the, when we looked at the nine-county education system on the eastern shore, the economic value of the education system equaled that of the agricultural sector. And most people think the eastern shore is just an ag industry, but really, the benefits of public education were toe-to-toe with agricultural sector. So it's not a, you know, it's, yeah, it's not something to blink at. It's a very significant value to the county.
Just Washington County has a large resource of ag as well, so.
Yeah, and that's something we could go back and look at as well to make a better comparison for this county specifically. I don't have those figures in front of me, but that's certainly something that we could look into to give you kind of a comparison point.
Secondly, I find that leakage, I would, I'd appreciate if you could expand on that. And the way I kind of interpret that is commuters. We have a large number in certain areas of our county that spend their day in DC or Baltimore or Virginia, just name it. But I assume also that we do have people commuting into our county. So I'm trying to figure out, it's not just leakage in one direction.
Correct. And the InPlan model takes into account, they track spending from all different sources, from the Bureau of Economic Analysis, from taxes, from Department Labor Licensing Regulation, from federal sources. And the most expensive part for us in buying the And the most expensive part for us in buying this offer is the data cost. Because they're tracking every dollar that's spent by a person within every jurisdiction in the entire country, how that dollar moves through the economy. So, when it looks at the model for this county, it would calculate how many people are coming into or coming out of the county. And then, also in terms of industry, how many of your vendors are using subcontractors or contract in the county versus out of the county as well. So, it doesn't just look at the one way. But when we're talking about the term leakage specifically, we're typically thinking of money that gets outside of the area where the spending originated.
And I guess, an obvious question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. The eastern shore counties, the nine that came together, how are they using this information? How are they pushing it out into their community?
Well, they not only shared it with their boards of education, but they've also shared it with their chambers, their rotary groups to help answer some of the difficult questions. For instance, each county uses it slightly differently because they're facing different issues. But one of the counties, the main issue for them is that most of their teachers live outside of the county. So, they're experiencing a significant amount of leakage. So, they took it to their business groups locally to help address the issue of how do we get, find more affordable, or build more affordable housing for our teachers so that we can keep them within the county and keep them spending within the county versus taking that paycheck outside of their county. So, that's been a significant resource, I think, is taking it beyond just the school boards and school systems, but taking it to others in the county to help solve some of these questions.
Because I think we have, what, 20% or more of our employees live outside? Is that low? It's probably higher than that. But we have a similar dynamic going on here, so that's interesting.
And we're always happy to come back and talk to other groups if you'd like us to. Just let us know and we'll make it happen.
Very good. Okay. Dr. Wilcox?
Well, I just wanted to share a couple things, because some might be tuning in, think they're watching the wrong meeting. They might be thinking they're watching the Board of County Commissioners. But I want to share that the reason that we got into this is because we began to take a look at what was happening with our budget situation. We were taking a look at our declining student enrollment number. We were taking a look at the formula. And then, it just so happened that some of my colleagues through the State Superintendent's Association were looking at doing a study of their own, particularly, I believe, in Garrett County is where this began. And we thought, well, you know what? We should join in on that because we're going to have to go before our funders at some point and demonstrate that there is a real value in investing in our school system and investing in our teachers. Quite honestly, you know, when we went before the Board of County Commissioners and asked for money beyond maintenance of effort, that was not an ask that was made in isolation of knowing that this study was going to say that those dollars would churn through our local economy and help to stimulate and perhaps quicken the pace of recovery in Washington County. So, we were very thoughtful and very mindful of that. I would also share with you that we clearly understand that we're part of a regional economy. We understand that Pennsylvania, West Virginia, and the great state of Maryland all have to rise together. So, we're not shy about that data, but we also wanted to make sure that we knew how our salaries impacted the local economy first and foremost. And so, that's why we partnered with Beacon here. I think the last thing that I would say is that it's our intention as an administration to share this information, not just with the county commissioners, but with our service clubs in this community where many of us are members. And we would certainly make these copies available to the board members so that you could speak with groups as you have the opportunity. I would share this also, you know, one of the things that we're talking about in this community, we have been for quite a while, is doing something downtown in terms of an academic hub. And if you think about the purchase price of that at $15.5 million, if we do get the go-ahead and the blessing to go-ahead, the investment of that money would then, and I don't want to steal your thunder, but would actually support about 240 jobs in the construction and building trades industries, as well as some related sub-industries. So, again, that's good for not just the school system, but that's good for the county, that's good for the local economy, that's good for the very kids whose parents are working in those industries that we're privileged to serve. So, I think this is one of those things, it's a virtuous cycle, and that we ought to be engaged in sharing this knowledge.
Thank you. Other questions on this? Thank you, Dr. Bunch. Mr. South?
Thank you.
As an economist, Dr. Bunch, you've probably never been included in a virtuous cycle before, but it's all good.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're back up again, or still up?
I am.
Yes.
Let me get back to my agenda.
Recognition of the Maryland Outstanding Leader Using Technology 2015.
So, we're very proud and pleased to have this year's recipient of the Maryland Outstanding Leader Using Technology Award for 2015. Most of you have spent some time at Emma K. Dobb Elementary School. You have spent time walking the hallways. You've seen young people who are there engaging in the world outside the school while sitting in their classroom. That really comes because of, I think, a group of greatly dedicated teachers. But those great teachers and support staff are supported by their principal, Catherine Polling. And Catherine is the 2015 winner. I've asked Catherine here today so that we can present a recognition from this board to her for her outstanding accomplishment and achievement, but perhaps most of all, for her support of great teachers and the use of technology to support their kids. I've also asked Catherine to talk to you just a little bit about some of the great things that are going on at Emma K. Dobb Elementary School. But Catherine, before you do that, I want to read a plaque that is being presented to you on behalf of the Washington County Board of Education. It says Catherine Polling. On behalf of the members of the Washington County Board of Education and the entire team of educators and staff, we commend you for being named the 2015 Maryland Outstanding Leader Using Technology by the Maryland Society for Education and Technology. And it's dated today, April 7, 2015. So, Catherine, if you'd come forward.
Thank you. I'm humbled and honored. Thank you very much. So, I am blessed to be in Washington County Public Schools. Every day, I get up so excited to come to school. And I have an amazing community, a wonderful group of teachers. And I would love to share a little bit about our school with you. When we started our work, one of the big tenants of our school is that we don't teach technology. We teach the curriculum and our standards. And when we started talking about having individual devices for students, we wanted to make sure that we based our work in some big guiding principles. The first one and most important being literacy. And so, we talked a lot as a staff and with district leaders about what that looks like at our school and what does technology afford us. And for us, we thought technology breaks down some of those traditional classroom walls. And what a better way to do it than through digital collaborative writing. So, we set goals for increasing reading and writing scores. And then, we talked a lot about changing some traditional teaching strategies. How could we do that? Creating a culture that supported innovation for our teachers that was based, again, in those academic standards. And to increase opportunities for communication, collaboration, and sharing of resources. So, our first year, we partnered with the University of Maryland through the National Writing Project, the University of Maryland Writing Project. And I know this chart is a little confusing. This was our first year. We've gotten better at data collection over the years. But the top part of it, if you just pay attention to the colors, the first part is showing the teachers that they could opt in. So, not everybody had technology, one-to-one technology in their rooms at the time, and not everyone received the professional development. So, the first, the top part of that chart are the teachers who engaged in the University of Writing cohort and had one-to-one devices for their students. And the bottom part are the teachers that didn't receive the professional development and did not have one-to-one devices. So, you can see a color difference between the progress there. One of the data points that we did not intend to measure, I think I've spoken with you about this before, is we saw significant declines in our referral rates. So, over the years, this is a November benchmark for us. We'll do this again at the end of the year. But we've seen significant declines in the number of students being referred. When I get a referral as an administrator now, it's primarily something happened on the bus or maybe in the cafeteria at recess. Very few are coming out of their instructional program, which shows, I think, that kids are really engaged in what's happening in their classrooms. And it also frees me up as an administrator to be an instructional leader. I'm not in my office having to discipline students. Instead, I'm out coaching teachers and supporting our teachers. Our writing data has made gains over, these are the last two years, the students who made their grade-level standards and then those who made 10 points growth. And we look at 10 points growth as those who've made a year's worth of growth in terms of writing. Oops, sorry. Looking at our RIT scores for reading, these are our students. So, we're looking at a group of students over time, and you can see the gains they're making in terms of making a year's worth of growth as readers. So, you can kind of watch our trends, like that third-grade trend is really pretty, where you see the step-by-step increments as they're growing as readers. And our math trends. And so, how do we do that? What does that look like in our school? We started with just what does great instructional planning look like? So, our teachers, before we put devices in the hands of every student, we sat down as a team and we looked at lesson plans and unit design and just really rich, great instruction. And then, we took a second look at those unit plans and we said, now, where would technology enhance this lesson? Where could we use it to personalize learning for students? How could we extend beyond our school and our traditional classroom walls? And so, we layered the technology in. It was a really nice progression to build some comfort. You know, we made some mistakes along the way. I think at the beginning, we talked a lot about content-specific apps. I remember one of the first units was a stars, sun, moon, and stars unit. And we spent forever looking at, for specific apps that would have kids looking at the stars. We learned over time, if we just find a couple really great apps that students could use for collaboration or communication to show what they know, that they could stem, they could cross any content area. I think that made the planning for teachers a lot easier over time. And then, we talked a lot about supporting our teachers. So, how do we become coaches and collaborators? That first year, Mr. Hayde came over and helped. Mrs. Hurley, our library and media specialist, we changed her schedule a bit so that rather than kids coming into her room, she would go into classrooms and co-teach with our teachers. And then, she was teaching the kids, but she was also coaching the teacher at the same time. And so, we had a really nice partnership. I get into classrooms, our lead teacher gets into classrooms. And so, kind of shifting schedules, but also providing that support on the fly. We shifted the way that we do professional development, too. It is very rare that you're going to see a stand-and-deliver, very traditional, full professional development. When I first started as a principal, that was kind of the model I was using. I would stand and talk at my teachers, and we moved away from that. So, we started with what we were calling Appy Hours, where the teachers would share apps that they were using and how they used them. We've moved into more of an ed camp model, where the teachers become the leaders of the professional development. And just like we want to offer choice for students, the teachers have choice. So, if someone has a question, they can say, "I'd love a tabletop discussion about how are you using vocabulary in your classrooms?" Another might say, you know, "I'm looking at assessment. What tools are you using?" Or another teacher might say, "I'm doing this great Google Classroom activity across the nation. Would anybody else like to join and learn about it?" So, they become teachers and learners at the same time. And there's choice. We also encourage teachers to become leaders and reach out beyond our schools to engage with vendors and corporations, ask questions, improve products. Our teachers are working with a company called Literably that is, students go onto their iPad and they do a running record assessment. And the software comes back and gives us real-time data on kids doing miscue analysis. It provides an audio file for parents, lots of diagnostic information that we wouldn't have otherwise. Our teachers are working side-by-side with that company to improve that product. Our teachers are also publishing courses on iTunes U. So, we believe in sharing and collaborating across our school, but across our county. And we have teachers, you know, leading some of that work across the state, which is We've also started to change the way a traditional assembly would work. So, very often, kids will sit in the cafeteria and a presenter comes in and speaks to them for 45 minutes, and it's great. But if you can change that and break down those traditional walls, again, this is an example. We had a poet who was in California. So, on the left-hand side, you can see him up on the screen. On the right-hand side, you can see Funkstown Primary School students and our students in the audience. Our kids have iPads in their hands. So, prior to this assembly, they have collaborated with the author in Google Drive, and they've been writing back and forth with him, creating poems. He then does a presentation live with them, is answering questions with both schools. And then, after the fact, he followed up with them with their writing. So, just a different twist on engaging our kids. We'll run back channels with them to make it a more engaging experience. And instead of flying the author all the way across the country and how much that would cost, it was a much more cost-efficient way to provide an experience like that for So, some of the next steps that we're looking at, we started last year looking at digital portfolios. You know, very often, the kids have their papers. They take them home at the end of the semester, the end of the year, and we don't have a record of that. And so, the vision is, how cool would it be for kids to be graduating seniors and to look back at some of the writing they did as kindergartners and third graders and eighth graders? So, we started that just within our own building for the time being. So, all of our kids have a Google site of their own that they're building and storing some of their digital work, their writings, and their digital files that they've been doing in their media classes. And then, they share with their parents during a digital celebration of learning in May, the growth that they've made, and they have artifacts to show. We are talking a lot about maker spaces, collaborative learning spaces in our classrooms, looking at our media center. We've redone our lobby. We have a collaborative Lego board with challenges on it, where the kids can come down during recess or they can earn extra time to work. Right now, they're doing a marble challenge, where they're trying to get a marble from one end of the board to another. We've been starting to work on sending devices home to really wrap around. We didn't do this all in one fell swoop. We wanted to make sure we did it right. And just like we kind of phased our devices in over time, we're phasing in our take-home. And part of that has been asking our parents what they want homework to look like, what works well for them currently, what doesn't, what families already have devices, who would be interested in it. So, right now, we have, I think we have about four or five classes that are sending devices home, and we're making adjustments as we go with the goal that next year, devices go home with everyone. We are continuing to focus on improving our numeracy and literacy in our digital environment and collaborating with our colleagues. We have, some of our teachers are really actively involved in the digital learning group. They're facilitating Twitter chats, leading professional development themselves. And so, some of the lessons that we've learned as a staff, that it's important to focus on student achievement and strong instruction. Then, we layer in the uses of technology to support our specific focus. We encourage collaboration and creation over content-specific apps, providing opportunities for reflection and sharing, and that we are comfortable in discomfort. The world of technology is always changing, and it is uncomfortable at times, but we're okay with that. We learned that we're going to take risks and try. I asked our teachers in a survey a couple of months, maybe two months ago, you know, how they felt about the culture in our building. And they all said, you know, "We're growing and learning and we're making progress." And they all felt that it was safe to take risks and try new things. And I think that's what helps us kind of move along and continue to grow. We never stop learning. And I think that's it. That's it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Catherine. We appreciate your leadership and your thoughtfulness.
Don't leave yet.
I'm sorry.
No. Any questions, comments, thoughts? This is a very dynamic presentation here. I'll just start out. I, what was it, three years ago, you invited me into your school? And I spent a couple hours, maybe, walking around, and the energy, the collaboration, the excitement, I still remember it, and I share it with friends throughout the state when I talk about the opportunities that Washington County offers its students. So, I think it's exciting, and I'm glad that you're being recognized and your skillset and your mindset is being acknowledged. I do think it's an honor and a privilege to have you as a leader in our school system. And I think without your commitment of connecting learners to technology and... And I think without your commitment of connecting learners to technology and our rural community here to the world, I think, I applaud you and I appreciate your effort on behalf of the students. I really do. So others?
I'll just share one thing. We may be the first district in MSAT history to have three employees who are their Maryland technology leaders. Last year, I was fortunate to win the award that Catherine just won this year, but we also hired Mr. Corn from St. Mary's, who in his last year of employment there, had won the very same award. So we've been really fortunate, and we have some really good technology leaders. So thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll also add my congratulations to you. When you were first hired, there's a member of your school community, whose name I won't use because she hasn't given me permission to use her name, but sent me emails every day during the hiring process saying, when are we going to know who the principal is? When are we going to know who the new principal is? Who's it going to be? And I remember after the board approved your appointment, as soon as that meeting was over, not during the meeting, colleagues, after the meeting was over, I sent her a text, and every time I see her now, she says, boy, I don't know how you guys hit such a home run. Just absolutely loves, and she has two or three kids in your school, or had two or three kids. Anyway, the number of parents I run into, and I speak to a lot of parents since I have kids in the schools myself, who speak so highly of your school, is overwhelming. So I just wanted to pass that along and congratulate you again, and I enjoy following your Twitter chats. I don't participate much.
You should join us.
I guess I should, but I'd stick out like the one non-educator in the group. But anyway, I enjoy following them, and thank you for taking that leadership role, not only here, but across the state.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. You still have some room in the agenda for an update, if you need it, like it.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to unfinished business. The second read to rescind policies IC, ICA, ICAA, ICB, and ID.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The Policy Committee is conducting a comprehensive review of Section I of the policy manual, which is entitled Instruction. During the Board of Education's last public business meeting, which was conducted on March 17th, the Policy Committee recommended the rescission of the five policies that the Board President just read into the record. Since the first reading, members of the public were invited to provide comments. No comments were received. At this time, the Policy Committee is requesting the second reading of the proposed rescission of these five policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading to rescind policy IC, policy ICA, policy ICAA, policy ICB, and policy ID.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Mrs. Fisher, you made the motion. Would you like to speak, too?
These items are all clearly in Calmar, in our Maryland law, and it just seems redundant to have them repeated in our policies.
Very good. Thank you. Any discussion, comments? The question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion to rescind. All those in favor? Seven zero.
Thank you.
All right, on to new business, and we'll start with the consent agenda. Mrs. Freeman. I believe we have eight items on the consent agenda this afternoon.
I'll try to do a quick overview and then open the forum for questions. The first item on the agenda is a request for the Board's authorization of a staff committee to make the award selection for the natural gas bid. We issued the request for bids. It's posted to our website currently. It's a two-step bid. The qualification proposals are due in, I think, early next week, and the prices are due in on April 21st. In order to get our best price, we have historically made the award selection the same day that the prices are received, and we're asking to do that again. The proposed committee would include the superintendent, of course, and his designee, whoever that he would choose to participate in the committee if he was busy, the deputy superintendent, the director of maintenance and operations, the energy management specialists, and I would also sit in on that committee. Second on the agenda is an item to purchase a cargo van for the maintenance and operations department. This is a replacement vehicle, and we're recommending that the purchase be made under an Arlington County, Virginia contract at what we believe is a very good price for this 2014 Freightline Sprinter van. The price is $41,530.72. The third item on the agenda is a requisition for some chiller service work at 24 of our schools. These are the schools that have chiller equipment to be serviced under this contract. This is an order that the Board authorized last year, and we were very pleased with the work that we did receive from Boil and Train. This order does help us maintain building equipment in good condition, and it also extends the life of the building equipment. The fourth item on the agenda is bid 2015-27. This is a construction project to replace rooftop units, air handling units, and the associated component equipments that are original to the Washington County Technical High School from 1972. An alternative price is also being recommended, which would replace ceiling and associated lighting in the mechanical air distribution system, excuse me, and also mechanical air distribution system, the mechanical air devices, and some sprinkling piping in one of the areas around one of the units. As this project is partially funded by the state, it did include minority business enterprise participation procedures, and I'm pleased to report that the recommended contractor is proposing to achieve those MBE goals, as well as the subgoals that were in the solicitation document. RH Lap and Sons of Cumberland, Maryland is being recommended at a total cost of $2,377,980. Unit prices are being recommended for unforeseen conditions related to some of the sprinkler piping replacement work. And as mentioned, because the state is participating, this award is contingent upon approval by the interagency committee for public school construction. Item five on the agenda is the first renewal of a contract for unit rates for landscape services. We have three companies that were awarded this work. Last year, we're asking to renew it for another year and to have spending authority up to $80,000 without bringing those individual projects back in front of the Board. Of course, if we get to $80,000 or above, we would be coming back to you, asking for your authorization to make those purchases. This contract was awarded to Antietam Tree and Turf, Advantage Landscape Construction, and Shades of Green Landscaping, all who have performed satisfactorily, as well as have agreed to extend those same unit prices for the next year to the school system. On to number six, Wilson Language Learning Foundations Materials. This is a purchase that we've been making and recommending for the last several years. These materials provide teachers and students with some support of the four foundational reading skills, as defined in the Maryland College and Career Readiness Standards, as well as within the school system's curriculum. The foundations were piloted at six schools in 2012 and 13. As a result of positive response, the project was expanded over the next several years. This project, you know, this purchase in front of you includes 29 requisitions, all for providing these foundational materials for continuation in the schools that I've indicated on the schedule that I provided in the package for you. This will proceed toward full implementation in all schools at the K through three level. My understanding is it will only complete this phase toward full implementation. It won't be fully implemented. We have one more year for full implementation. The grand total of this purchase is $194,112.77. Number seven, this is a recommendation to continue to utilize a Fairfax County contract for cellular telephones and services, and this is the final year that good contract pricing is available to us. So we're recommending that we continue to utilize that contract through June of 2016. And item eight on the agenda is a order for water treatment services at 11 schools. These, the service work is necessary to help maintain our building equipment in good working condition, as well as to extend the life of the equipment. And we, this was an order, similar order that the Board authorized last year, and we had a good, positive result. It concludes the eight consent items for your considerations afternoon.
Thank you, Mrs. Freeman. We require a motion on this consent agenda.
Madam President, I move to delegate authority, approval authority of the bids for natural gas to a committee that will report their decision at a future meeting, to purchase a van for the maintenance department from American Truck and Bus, Inc., at $41,530.72. Annual chiller maintenance service to Boil and Train Services, Inc., at $60,560. AHU/RTU replacement at Washington County Technical High School to RH Lap and Sons at $2,377,980. On-call landscape maintenance services, first renewal to Antietam Tree Service, Inc., Shades of Green Landscaping and Excavating, and Advantage Landscaping and Construction, Inc., at the bid unit prices anticipated to total purchases of $80,000. Requisitions to Wilson Learning Language Foundations Materials at $194,112.77. Continue to utilize the FCPS contract for cellular telephones and services through June 2016, to AT&amp;T Mobility and Water Treatment Services, to cooling towers, I'm sorry, to cooling tower systems and steam boilers, to Boil and Train at $39,060.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harding's. Discussion, questions for Mrs. Freeman. Dr. Michael.
As a teacher, I always tried to avoid having students write on materials unless it was absolutely necessary to complete the assignment. I'm wondering what percentage of this purchase order, and I realize this is only for a portion of schools, although I do understand it's a very good program. I did see a presentation on instruction, through the Instruction Curriculum Committee. But I'm wondering what portion of this is for consumables, and if there's any way to avoid consuming the consumables, since this seems to be such a good program and one that we'll continue to use.
I'm definitely not the resident expert on foundations, so I'm going to ask.
Welcome, Mr. Semler.
In terms of the portion of the... I know that each year, we've looked at our projected cost after we finish the initial purchases for all K through third-grade classrooms, and we looked at approximately $100,000 a year, which would be part of our materials costs that we've used for other materials such as this in the past. We're just kind of redefining them for the consumable materials. The materials that the kids are using are basically aligned with the instructional activities and things that the teachers are doing, as sort of a follow-up reinforcement activities. If you would look at the cost of probably printing similar activities or similar things, the cost probably wouldn't be much different. However, these are barely aligned, they are strictly aligned with the program and with the Maryland College and Career standards.
I also was wondering if, as we advance in technology, there would be a way for students to complete those things on their iPads or computers, and therefore not use consumables.
There could be potential for that. I do know that a lot of the consumables are also some of our handwriting program as well, and this is, foundations is used for our handwriting pieces, so that, we want to make sure that we have that piece in place as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Matt answered my question.
Oh, okay. Other questions? Mrs. Harshman.
I just had a question about number five, the landscape maintenance services, first renewal bid. Is this, the $80,000, what happens if that is not used in that year? Or do we always hit $80,000?
It's part of our contractual services. There's a long list of contractual services in the maintenance budget, so if we spend $60,000 there instead of the $80,000 that's budgeted, more than likely, we would transfer that $20,000, make a request, have the $20,000 transferred to another contractual service, asphalt, concrete, tree removal, other types of things that are in contractual service line items.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions?
Right.
Yeah, Dr. Harding's.
Item number four, the AHU and RTU replacement at the Technical High School. One point, almost 1.7 million comes from the state capital budget, the .7, well, 700,000 or so local, is that coming from the county through the CIP, or is that coming out of our maintenance funds?
This is a project we requested in last year's CIP, so we did have a million-dollar match of systemic money in the project. Fortunately, the project has bid low, so we do have matching money for this particular project.
These are, these are county dollars through this, through our capital improvement.
Trailing a year ago, yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? The question is on Mr. Ridenhour's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Dr. Michael. All right, consideration of a gift to Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. Dr. Wilcox.
Thank you. This evening, the Secretary of Director, Mr. Akers, is actually at another school doing some work that we've asked him to do. So he's asked me to carry forward this request to the Board to accept the generous donation of a baby grand piano for the music program at Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. The piano has been well-cared-for and has been appraised at $7,900. The quote was included, included the materials that were provided to the Board. We'd like to proceed with this donation and request the Board's authorization to do so.
Thank you. A motion is required.
Madam President, I move to accept the gift to Barbara Ingram School for the Arts from Mr. Holloway of a 1984 Yamaha G1 baby grand piano for the music department.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. I'm just watching you holding. Don't want to put it on your lapel. No. Okay, then. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harding's. Questions, comments to Dr. Wilcox on this donation? All those in favor, please signify. Seven zero.
Thank you.
Please extend our appreciation.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, that brings us up to consideration, first reading of proposed changes for policy GCBDA, family and medical leave. Welcome back, Mr. Trotta and Miss Keller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Board of Education's Human Resources Committee recommended that policy GCBDA, which is entitled Family and Medical Leave, be updated and streamlined. The Human Resources Committee, in essence, recommended that the current policy be rescinded and that it be replaced with a new policy that is concise and consistent with... and that it be replaced with a new policy that is concise and consistent with recent updates in federal law. Ms. Regina Keller presented this topic to the Policy Committee for its consideration. The Policy Committee discussed the proposed changes at its public work sessions conducted on February 24th, March 10th, and March 24th. The Policy Committee recommended minor changes in the wording of the policy, and it added several definitions to Article III of the policy. The Policy Committee is recommending the approval of the first reading of the proposed changes to this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy G C B D A, which is entitled "Family and Medical Leave."
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harding's. Ms. Fisher, would you like to speak to your motion?
We did just simply what Mr. Trotta said, corrected or updated the policy, made some language changes, added some definitions. I think it's very straightforward and very clear, so.
Thank you. Any questions on this policy? Ms. Williams.
Yes, looking at number two, background, the acronym F M L A at the beginning of that sentence, should that be that acronym which stands for the act itself, or should that be "family and medical leave" is provided?
If you would refer to the purpose clause, line two, where we use the terminology, the complete name of the act, and then refer to it thereafter as F M L A, which is pretty common practice.
Okay, so we're providing the act as opposed to providing family and medical leave? That's my question.
It says -- I'm sorry, you're in the second paragraph of --
Background.
Second paragraph. I mean, I don't find that confusing, but we certainly can look at that.
I understand what she's talking about. In the first paragraph under background, F M L A is referring to the act, the written law. When you go to the second paragraph, F M L A is talking about the leave itself, not the law that allows the leave.
We certainly can take that back to the Policy Committee.
I don't think it's something that would require another read. I think we can just make that fix.
I would agree. I don't think that needs to go back. Everyone's all right with that. Any other questions, comments?
Do you have any more?
I guess the only thing I -- I'm sorry, Ms. Harshman.
I'm sorry, I didn't think she was finished. Are you finished?
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. Okay. Down in definitions E, where it says parent, the biological parent is of an employee or an individual who stood in loco parentis to an employee when the employee was a child. And then it says, "This does not include parent-in-law, but can include step-parent." Does that mean that if the step-parent was raising the child from maybe 18 on, that that person is counted or is not counted as a parent?
Anybody that would be a step-parent would be considered under the law?
But it says as a child. They had to be -- according to the first sentence, you had to be their guardian or parent when that employee was a child. That's what I'm wondering. Then it says, "This does not include a parent-in-law," which most likely would not be as a child, but it also says can include step-parent.
I don't know.
That I think's a little confusing.
That's very true. These definitions are actually taken straight from the federal law.
That doesn't mean it wouldn't be confusing, does it?
So we can see if we can find some clarification for those definitions.
That would be good, because I can't tell if a step-parent who stepped in at the child's 18th birthday is considered a parent or not.
Right.
Okay, and did you have anything else?
I just have one more. Mrs. Williams. Yes. The term work week is -- I need some clarification, and I'm thinking that perhaps that needs to appear in the definition as well. Are we looking at work week as five days where our employees would work, or what -- you know, we have days where people work three, but there's work in that week. So what would be considered 12 weeks when you have weeks that some are not five days or not four work weeks?
A work week is defined as any week that an employee would consistently be expected to be at work during that week. It may be a three-day work week. That would still constitute as one work week. So a work week is anything where a work would take place.
I would suggest to the committee that that might be defined under the list of definitions. Perhaps that could appear as high, just for clarity. I think you could get some questions from employees that would say, "Well, you know, my leave wasn't equal to someone else's leave in that mine constituted some work weeks where I only had three days off where someone else was off five." So just as clarity.
Mrs. Fisher is chair. Your thoughts on that? Do you see that as verifying correction, or should we make a motion?
If the board agrees that we can make that correction or add that definition without bringing it back for another read.
This is just the first read.
I think we can -- oh, this is the first read. That's right.
So we can make whatever needs to be done.
Okay, so we don't need to -- we'll handle that tomorrow.
The only other one, just for clarification, I think the only change we made from status quo on this was the 12-month period on measuring. Would you like to clarify that for the public, maybe?
Sure. Right now, our policy provides for the board's 12-week period to consist of July 1 through June 30. We're requesting the change be made for the 12-month period to a rolling 12-month period measured backwards from the last date that F M L A is used. That seems to be the common measurement period for most companies to use for F M L A. And I think one of the reasons that we would like to make that change is that the way that it's set now with a July 1 through June 30, we have a specific timeframe, and it does allow employees to stack their 12 weeks on top of another 12 weeks immediately. So if they were using 12 weeks of time that ended sometime around the end of June, they could immediately then apply for a new 12-week period, July 1, and be approved for that, almost getting a chunk of 24 weeks at the same time. We feel it's better to measure it so that you actually do get just a true 12 weeks in a 12-month period. So to make that change, we do -- it is required of us to notify employees at least 60 days in advance if that change is approved, so we'll make sure that we do that as well if it goes through.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, the motion is on the first read of this policy. Mrs. Fisher's motion. All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Mr. Trotta, you can stay there.
Yes.
Go right into the next first reading.
Thank you. During the Policy Committee's public work session conducted on March 24, it reviewed the following policies: Policy I E, School District Organizational Plan; Policy I F, Curriculum Development; and Policy I G, Curriculum Development, Adoption and Review. Based upon the committee's review, it had the following observations. First, with regard to Policy I E, the subject matter of this policy is already covered by Policy J C A, which is entitled "Establishment of School Attendance Zones," and Exhibit B D F dash E six, entitled "Facilities and Enrollment Advisory Committee." With regard to Policy I F and I G, the committee noted that these policies are addressed in Section 4 dash 111 of the Education article, which is entitled "Curriculum Guides and Course of Study, Study of Sign Language." Based upon these observations and findings, the Policy Committee is recommending the rescission of these three policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. A motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading to rescind Policy I E, School District Organization Plan; Policy I F, Curriculum Development; and Policy I G, Curriculum Development, Adoption and Review.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenour. Ms. Fisher, would you like to speak to the motion?
Again, I think Mr. Trotta was very clear on our reasoning for recommending rescission of these items. If we keep going at this rate, we might get that policy book down to a size where you can pick it up.
Or we could throw it out and just use our electronic version. Sorry. All right, any discussion on this motion? Question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion, then. All those in favor? Thank you. Seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Don't go too far away. Mrs. Francisco, personnel actions.
Breitman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board, as discussed earlier in closed session, there are several personnel actions for your review and approval today.
Thank you. Motion?
Madam President, I move for the approval of personnel actions recommended by staff.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Harding's. Second?
Second.
Mr. Ridenour? The question is on Dr. Harding's motion, personnel action. All those in favor?
I'm winded if I don't.
Thank you. Seven zero. Thank you. All right, Mrs. Cade, Mr. Trotta, reports to the board, legislative briefing.
I didn't think it was that close.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much. We are into the last week of the legislative session, and this is always when push comes to shove on a number of bills, and when things happen that you don't expect, and when things that you might have hoped would happen, don't. And it never ends until midnight next Monday night. And I assure you that some things really will be happening in the last 15 minutes of the legislative session. So to catch up on a little bit, I was sick last month with pneumonia and have now just returned from a very international wedding of my grandson in Dubai. So I am myself doing a little catch-up on things, but I believe that I can convey to you really the essence of what's going on. There's been a great deal of work by M A B and a whole coalition of organizations regarding the governor's charter school bill. And that has involved, as well, the governor's office, the proponents for charter schools, et cetera. And that bill appears to be moving along now as Senate Bill 595, much different from the bill that was introduced at the beginning of the session. It assures still that there would only be local boards approving the charter school that would occur in that county, whereas the bill originally expanded that. It has taken out anything about giving money from the school construction fund to charter schools, and that might be an exception if they are in a school system-owned building. I'm not quite sure where that one has ended up. All in all, the bill now is something quite acceptable. It has some concerns still in it, but I believe that that bill will pass, and there will be a charter school bill. Whether it will be a bill satisfactory to the governor, who wanted a bill much broader than this one, we'll wait and see. There's a great deal of unknown regarding the finalization of the education budget. As you know, the House and the Senate both put back in most of the money that the governor had not put into the budget for education, particularly G C E I, which of course does not affect this county, but a cost of living also. So both House and Senate had worked their way to putting that money back in, not all of it, but most of it. And the governor does not have to agree to spend that money, apparently. Meanwhile, in his second supplemental budget, the governor put in a program which had been not approved by the legislature. We've talked many times about what I call the boast bill, which would provide tax credits for businesses that give -- or individuals that give money to an organization that is certified to make grants to non-public schools. The governor has converted this now into a grant program where up to $5 million in grants could be made to contributions that went to non-public schools for scholarships and so forth. It's even broader than the boast bill. There's a lot of tension right now about this whole thing, because the House and the Senate had not acted on those bills. They had basically said they're not going to pass them. The governor has now put it in in the supplemental, and if they don't agree to allow that program, will he then not allow the expenditure of the G C E I money? So it's very interesting, and it is an unknown. It's more likely that the Senate would go along with the governor's request, but the House is quite likely not to. That means that the House and the Senate sub-conference committees could be in great tension, and again, this could go to the very last moment. The legislature cannot adjourn until they have adopted a budget. The governor cannot veto the budget that is adopted by the legislature. So this will be something you'll be reading about in the paper throughout this week. Two bills that we thought might have wings to fly that haven't, again, the burden of proof, which -- and making the boards of education bear the responsibility for the burden of proof in I E P conflict cases. And that bill does not appear to be moving. And also, the bill which was touted widely about starting the school year after Labor Day appears is not going to pass, which I think we're all grateful for.
At this point, anything that's not out of committee is pretty much stuck there?
Maybe.
Okay.
You can't count on that. You know, there's sometimes now trades this for that, and a committee chairman can pull a bill out of the drawer, as they say, and vote on it, and it can quickly move. I listed in my report a number of other bills that you don't probably read about in the newspaper. The student diabetes management has been an interesting bill, because it says that you can train volunteers within the school system, teachers and so forth, to administer diabetes management, both insulin and glucagen. Glucagen? And apparently, this kind of bill has passed in many 20 states, I think. And there are some lobbyists who have been moving around the country, talking about this bill. Now, this sounds pretty easy. It sounds like, okay, that doesn't sound too complicated. There are enormous numbers of complications in regard to this. It would all be voluntary, but they've added even that, to the extent possible, there would be a nurse or a volunteer with a diabetic student even on field trips and in extracurricular events. So it gets beyond maybe what was intended, and I don't think that that bill is going to pass. It's passed the Senate, I believe, but it's languishing in ways and means. It's passed the Senate, I believe, but it's languishing in ways and means, and the sense is that it won't come out. But don't count on that. The Orange Ribbon for Healthy School Hours. Now, this is an interesting sort of non-bill bill, in that it will give a certification, a credit, a standing to any school, that school system where they start on healthy hours. And that would mean that an elementary school would be in class, requires, they would not require a student to be in class before 8:00 a.m. or board a school bus before 7:00, and middle and high school kids would not be required to be in class before 8:30 or board a bus before 7:30. But it doesn't have much behind it, except the recognition that you are then doing healthy hours. And I believe your school system is one of the healthiest hours of any in the state at this point. That may or may not go through, and it doesn't have a great deal of impact if it does. The Education Student Data Privacy Act, this is one that last year Microsoft and Google were not in agreement. And it has to do with access by anybody of the privacy records of your students as they're out in the cloud and in the technology world. I don't really understand all of this, but it seemed to be moving this year. Google and Microsoft were content with each other, but now a group of tech people led by Facebook is asking for a ton of amendments. So, we don't know whether their amendments are acceptable and whether it is a bill that is going to get through the EHEA committee, then if it's amended there, whether, when it gets back to the House, whether it will be accepted. So, again, that one was, last year died in like the last two hours, and is back, and we thought it was okay and flowing along. The Maryland Council on the Advancement of School-Based Health Centers is a council that will be looking at that issue. We're included, but it's a bill that, if it goes way forward, it will end up being a very expensive program, but will be part of the study and so forth. The next is a task force to study the expansion of career and technology education in Maryland. It's passed the Senate and has been heard in ways and means, but the committee hasn't acted on it. I think hopefully, this will pass, and again, it includes people from school systems, and it says that they must be from different regions of the state. And I hope that Washington County will be represented, since I think, again, you are some of the leaders in this area. The Task Force to Study the Implamation of Dyslexia Education, there again, you have a constituency who want dyslexia tested for early or universally. And dyslexia is not a federal disability, and therefore, at this point, school systems aren't mandated to do a broad testing of a kid for dyslexia and have a program. So, this again, will perhaps lead to some very expensive implementation, but at the same time, is something that has broad appeal, and I think that it probably will pass, though it has, it's still in ways and means committee. One bill that's already really truly passed is, well, that, excuse me, that one has passed both House and Senate and is, as they say, enrolled. That means that bill has been passed crosswise. Both Houses have passed the bill. It will now go to the governor for signature.
In order to refer into higher education, college admission outreach programs?
Well, no. I was talking about the dyslexia program, but I skipped the expansion of, no.
No, you didn't.
I was speaking of the, excuse me, I was down here.
Okay.
Skip that one. Oh, yeah, I did skip the Maryland Council on Advancement of School, no.
This is proof there's too much going on down there.
There is a lot going on down there. The Higher Education Committee College Admission Outreach Program is a program that is intended to assure that low-income, high-achieving students are given full opportunity to know about college opportunities, college financing, and so forth. And then it also rewards higher education institutions, who will use the list of these lower-income kids and give them admission without application. And so, that program is kind of an idealistic, but perhaps very important program. We don't know what ways and means it's going to do with that one. The kindergarten through grade two state assessment was going to be a moratorium, as the bill was introduced, that you wouldn't be able to do these long assessments of kindergartners and so forth for a year while the study was going on. The bill now, it was killed in the Senate, in the Senate Committee, but now it passed in the House. And so, now the Senate maybe will still be looking at the House bill. Usually, once it's killed on one side or the other, it doesn't go anywhere. But apparently, some of the committee members think maybe they should have approved it when they disapproved it. So, that may happen, and that, again, will be studying whether you're doing too much, too long testing of pre-kindergarten through grade two children. The next one, the Transport of Weapons on School Property, allows retired law enforcement officers who have, who are certified to, and are wearing a badge, to carry firearms in schools at the same level that currently other current law enforcement officials may do. That was somewhat controversial, and we're not sure. It's in judicial proceedings now on the Senate side. I made a mistake in my report there, and we'll see where it goes and whether it moves or not. The Special Education Translation of IEPs was a bill that had lots and lots of discussion, because it originally called for a parent, when an IEP had been established, requesting that that IEP be translated into their native language. And this doesn't sound so complex until you start understanding that an IEP may be very long, very complicated and technical, and that in the state school system, there are children whose native language is number well over 100 and maybe over 200. And so, if you were required to translate an IEP into Arabic or something, that could be a very high cost for you. They have modified the program now to be a pilot program in Montgomery County, where they're probably the most language is spoken, and the school system that was most interested in this, and they'll be reporting back in a couple of years as to the costs, you know, how many parents requested it, how complicated it was, how expensive it was, how useful it was. So, that's okay, to pass that bill as a pilot program. Another bill that I didn't list is what they call Lauren's Law. It's House Bill 947, and it will require that school counselors to be recertified will have to have training in suicide prevention. And that seems like something that is not beyond the, what should be expected and will be probably passed and accepted. There's a Commission on Testing that will require a task force, but before the task force, they'll have to be done a survey of all kinds of who tests whom for how many hours in the year. We don't know what's going to happen with that. It's likely to pass, but we'll have to wait and see on that one. Another bill, House Bill 642, requires that contractors, well, it requires that in your contracts, you must say to contractors that they should not, may not, to the extent possible, have anyone working on a school project where students are around who has been convicted of sexual charges. So, at first, it was the school system that we're going to have to implement that, and it was going to be really complicated. But it's been amended to a more practical level, where your contracts will say that the contractor has to have that responsibility of not sending people to work on school projects when schoolchildren will be around, if they have any conviction like that. Another bill that has had a lot of attention has to do with the visually impaired and the mobility and orientation assessments of those students, and whether all visually impaired students should, some do have IEPs and are looked at, but then should all have orientation and mobility assessments, even when the school system has deemed that they don't really need those special services. Again, it's been sort of dramatic in its work, working through the legislature. The Hunger-Free Schools Act, which you were very involved in last year, and again, this year, which helps you get and maintain in your record-keeping, may simplify for free and reduced lunch programs. Your staff person, Jeff, has been very good about testifying on that bill. It's moving and should be fine. Finally, last night, the Senate passed the House version of the Superintendent's Contract Bill, and I believe that probably today, the House will pass the Senate's version, so there will be two bills actually completely passed in that regard. The bill regarding the alternate certification is still working its way, has been reduced to a pilot program in Washington County, in which the state PESTAB, which stands for Professional Standards Teacher Education Board, which is within the State Board of Education, but is semi-autonomous. They would develop the guidelines for this pilot program, for a three-year pilot for Washington County, which would be useful to other jurisdictions, which have the same alternate hiring certification problems. That bill is still in EHEA in the Senate, and I'm meeting tomorrow morning with Senator Pinsky, who is kind of the person who will say, well, let's move it or let's not. And the staff people here are preparing some additional material, and if any of you want to come to Monapolis tomorrow morning before 9:00, I would be happy to have you join me at that meeting. So, that bill is still on its way, may make it, may not make it. So, that's what I know about what's happening in Annapolis at this moment, and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cade. We always appreciate you coming out west here.
I enjoy it, and I don't know if I stayed with it in my 15 minutes or not.
You did just fine. Questions or comments? All right. You wowed everyone. Okay. Mr. Ridenhour? Nope. Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll be back with the final report in a month.
We have you on the agenda. Thank you. All right. Board Member Committee Reports. Mrs. Hirschman, Curriculum?
Curriculum and Instruction will meet Tuesday, April 28th, at 12:00 noon, hopefully, in the Board Conference Room. We've had to cancel many times, so I'm hoping we can get through this one. The agenda will be posted, and one of the items already on the agenda is the APEX, which is a summer program.
Mrs. Williams, Facilities?
Yes, our committee will be meeting on Tuesday, April 28th, at noon, third-floor conference room, and the agenda will be posted.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Gesford, Finance?
Yes, the Finance Committee will meet on April 28th at 10:45 in the, on the third-floor Board Room.
Mrs. Fisher, Policy and Review?
Policy Committee met March 24th. We reviewed additions to the policy on the Family Medical Leave Act, which, of course, we passed earlier in this meeting. After extensive discussion, the committee sent a policy on portable electronic devices back to staff for additional items to be added. We're continuing, of course, to review the I section policies. We've approved Policies IE, IF, IG for first read today for rescission. Policy IA on Instruction Goals and Learning Objectives will be added to the upcoming Board Workshop on Policies AD and AF involving Board Goals and Mission. We felt that that item was possibly too controversial for us to just deal with, and that needed entire Board input. No one offered testimony on Policies IC, ICA, ICC, ICB, or ID, so they were referred for second read today for rescission. And the Policy Committee will meet April 8th, that's tomorrow, at 9:00 a.m., and then again on the 21st at 1:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour, HR?
The HR Committee will meet on the 28th, Tuesday, the 28th, in the HR Conference Room at 9:00.
I also have Ad hoc.
I was going to come back around, Mrs. Fisher.
The Ad hoc Committee on Board Communications met March 31st. We reviewed and revised the second half of the existing operating processes and talked about the Board norms. Then we began evaluating Board policies, which deal with communication, to determine if there are additional items to be added to the operating processes or the norms from those policies. We discussed BDDK, entitled Reporting Board Business Meetings, and BJ Board Legislative Program so far. The Ad hoc Committee will meet April 15th at 10:00 a.m., and then again on April 28th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay. Any concerns with meeting the deadline, sunset on this, or do you want to wait?
I will know more, I think, after our next meeting, whether we'll be able to complete it by the end of June, I believe, was the date, or was it the beginning of June?
Beginning.
Either way, I think after our next meeting, we'll have a better handle on whether we'll bring it in on time or not.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, any update on the Diversity Task Force?
No, nothing.
Okay. And MAB Conference?
We have the MAB Conference Planning Committee meeting on this Friday in Annapolis, so we will have a report on where we are with that next time.
Very good. Thank you. And just to note that Mrs. Williams received confirmation of her service on the MAB Resolutions Committee, so thank you for taking time for that, and at any time you'd like to make a report on that, just, we can do it during this part of the agenda if you're.
I don't think we meet until July. I think July 13th is the first meeting.
Very good. Thank you. And the Legislative Response Team, as we have before. Mr. Trotta, you're welcome to approach if you'd like. I think Mrs. Cade went over most of the items. I didn't know if you had anything to add on that.
Everything.
Very good. Okay. What I would like to just take a moment, there does seem to be some confusion as to how the Legislative Response Team works, and how Board norms work, and sort of the function of a public vote and the official record. So, I wanted to just take a moment to review a few things. On July 28th... On July of 2014, this Board, a different Board, Mr. Gesford is new since then, but did adopt Policy BJ, which is our legislative program. On October 7, we adopted our core values. On December 9, we adopted in a 7-0 vote, three initiatives. And we met then with a delegation later that evening and discussed our platform and our legislative initiatives. During the Board of Education's joint meeting with the county commissioners on February 3rd, we had a lengthy discussion on private financing initiative. No one voiced objections to the initiative at that point. We've had Board meetings, business meetings on February 17, March 3, and March 17, where at each meeting, as we're doing now, we have a Legislative Response Team report. So there certainly were many additional opportunities to seek reconsideration of positions on anything or to ask questions about any legislation. On March 24, the Legislative Response Team, in accordance with Policy BJ, submitted testimony supporting Senate Bill 924, which is the same bill as our earlier private finance, except it became statewide rather than a local pilot, our local privilege. I do understand, found out in a newspaper article, that two Board of Ed members submitted letters in opposition to Senate Bill 924 to the Budget and Taxation Committee. And again, while it's understandable that a Board member might take a different position after an official public vote by all of the Board members, in all fairness, to our entire Board as well as to our delegation and to Mrs. Cade, who was just here, and in accordance with Board norms, it would be requested that Board members take the following actions. Please extend the courtesy of informing other Board members of your intended course of action. Offer a statement at the next available public business meeting that the member, as an individual, was taking a different position. Disclose to the Budget and Taxation Committee the official action taken by the Board at its public business meeting, supporting the bill, but that as an individual, that you have now changed your position on that bill. I also remind my colleagues that individual members do not have the authority to represent the corporate Board or to alter the official votes that are on record. At this point, the official vote on the private financing remains 7-0, and until a Board member seeks reconsideration, that is what is on the record. So just some thoughts, and I would welcome any one speaking to me privately after the meeting, or if you have any comments now, that's appropriate. Otherwise, hearing none. Mrs. Fisher?
I'll offer just a comment. I know our Board operating procedures and norms have not been updated for some time. However, barring that, or until they are, they still are in effect, and I believe all Board members should honor those operating procedures and norms. They are certainly taught us by MAB, not just in the, first of all, in the orientation for new Board members, but through other programs that MAB offers. And we send Board members to those symposiums and various conferences and so on. And I'm wondering why the Board, why should the school system spend good money to send people to those symposiums if Board members are going to violate those, what they're taught as how to act as a Board member? It just upsets me that some Board members would go behind the backs of the rest of the Board members and do what they did.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Any other comments? Moving on to Board Member Committee Reports, excuse me, Future Agenda Items. I went backwards instead of forward. I apologize. Briefly, we did have our work session this morning on the FIAC report. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. And the next step, as I mentioned at the work session, is that we, the Board, we now hand this report over to the Superintendent. He and staff look at this, and they report it back out to us prior to a public hearing. Tentatively, we're looking at April 21 at that session, at that public meeting, to get the report from the Superintendent. And tentatively, the public hearing would be May 5. So we are going to certainly try to get this in before the end of the school season. So we're down to Board Member Comments, and I will stand corrected, but I think I started to my right last time, so I'm starting to my left this time, and that would be with Mrs. Hirschman.
I just wanted to thank Potomac Heights for having Mr. Gesford and me to help the students with their spring baskets and Easter egg dyeing, and we had a wonderful day with the children. And I appreciate the principals allowing us to be there, and the art teacher, Mrs. Green. So Mr. Stark and Mrs. Green, and the rest of the faculty, thank you very much for your cordiality and for how welcomed we felt, and also for some input. So it was nice talking with you about things that concern you. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Dr. Hardings?
Just one comment. I attended the community meeting in Boonesboro, I guess it was almost three weeks ago now, regarding the idea that town has to put an aquatic center or a pool in that community. I believe all Board members received an invitation to that, to that meeting. It was a good discussion. They're still very much in the planning stage. For the information of my colleagues, one of the things that the individual who was doing, commissioned to do the study of the viability of the pool idea, mentioned is that in every other community he's been in, the school system has been a partner in building pools. The town manager, I think, very effectively said, well, what's different in Maryland is that school systems are countywide. They're not as local as they are in most other states. And that's, and to her credit, she said, that's probably why you won't get the same reaction here, because as our school system, we have to be very sensitive about not helping to build something in one community if we're not prepared for other, other communities within Washington County to make the same ask. So that was, that was very good. I reinforced that. I said, I can't speak for the Board, but we do have seven municipalities and an entire county to consider when we look at capital projects. I also explained to them that Boards of Education in Maryland don't have taxing authority, so that sort of changes the dynamic of doing capital projects. And then I finally pointed out, though, that we do have a number of working relationships with other entities, the Maryland Theater, for example, Children's Village, where we do engage in fee-for-service type relationships with other organizations. And I said, I didn't know if that was something that we would consider in Boonesboro, but it's something that we have done in the past, and if there was something like that down the road, that'd be a conversation that we would have to have with them. I emphasized a few times that I don't speak for the Board. I only speak as one member, and that I was not there representing the Board, although I am a member of the Board who was invited to the meeting. So that's my report on that meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Hardings. Mr. Gesford?
Yes. I'd like to thank the staff at Paramount for the invitation to Green Fest that Mrs. Hirschman and I attended. I spoke to Mrs. Wilford, the principal out there. The halls were full of activity and energy and the smell of hundreds of cakes. I don't think I've ever seen so many cakes in my life in one setting, but they were, the community had come together, and they were doing cake walks. And I think every child and adult was carrying a cake around that day. And I mean, there was a lot of cakes. But the fun and the energy of the staff, the parents of that community was very overwhelmingly, it was just, it was a wonderful event. So if anyone ever gets to go to that event, that was very good. So that's all I really have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Fisher?
Just want to congratulate the principal of Conca Jig Elementary, Ms. Nicole Paylor, for receiving a $500 award for her school based on family involvement there.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. And the Chair has no comments, and we have come to the end of the agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you.